November 1st, 2018. Called order at 6 o'clock. Later on, we'll have the assessors coming onboard for a tax classification hearing at 6:30. So, at 6:30 comes, we'll discontinue if we don't finish everything. Under announcements, 11-11-11, this November 11th, there'll be a short ceremony in front of Town Hall to honor those that have done the ultimate sacrifice. And if anybody can stop by to, for the short ceremony, it would be appreciated. Talking about your democratic freedoms, voting next week, November 6th. At that time, the Open Space Committee will have sketches of the pavilion. Previously, the committee met with various residents in town to review some sketches. They listened to what the residents had for changes. They'll be putting these sketches at the voting, outside the voting booths, and everybody can vote for them. So even if you voted for the election, please stop by to vote for which sketch you feel is most appropriate. I know I've been asked to follow up on the water grant for West Street. At this time, we still have no information. We're still keeping our fingers crossed. And to my understanding, there has been no grants awarded for Hampshire County from there. Those are my announcements. My colleagues have any announcements for this evening?
I was just, Mr. Chairman, could you just clarify what time the November 11th ceremony is? Do you know?
11 o'clock. 11-11-11.
Okay.
11 a.m.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Thank you. That's all I, that's all I just wanted to verify that.
Okay, everybody's good. Go to approval of minutes. Make a motion to approve January 17th, 2018.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion?
Yes, I had a lot of things that I felt weren't in there that I'd like to just address later, and not at this time because it was executive session. So I don't think I can bring it up now. But yes, there's a lot of things that I felt were left out. I had a, you know, I'd just like to get an answer as to why. So I'd like to hold off on that, and I do, I'd like to discuss it.
Okay, we'll hold off on that then.
You know, unless you want me to-
It is a summary of the meeting.
It's a summary.
Minutes taken.
Right.
I don't, it's not verbatim.
Right.
The meeting minutes are not verbatim.
But most of them are all one side of an issue and none from the other side of the issue. And I thought it should be at least somewhat balanced.
Okay, well, that meeting wasn't televised, so it wouldn't be-
Right, so I wouldn't say it now, that's what I'm saying. I'd just like to discuss it further.
Was, so, and that was a meeting, that was an executive session meeting that, that actually had to do with one of the emergency management, not the emergency manager, but the, with the fire chief. So, actually, the only two select board members that should have been part of that meeting were Select Menor, Scan, myself, given that at the time, the emergency management director worked for the fire chief. So it really wasn't even appropriate for the third select board member to be part of that conversation.
I don't believe it was four. That's what you tried to change this last time? That was negated, that vote? So I don't believe that was correct.
You know, we can try to split hairs. The reality is that the position was underneath the fire chief, Cindy.
No, it wasn't.
And that was the reporting structure. That's why you can't sign off, couldn't sign off on payroll when you're emergency management director, you couldn't do other things. And certainly, talking about the chief's contract was one of those things. It never, that, that meeting never should have happened with all three of us, quite frankly. So, you know.
All right, well, I can produce later, we don't have to do that now. I can produce later where it says it comes under the select board. It is in the select board charter. Okay. I've got it with me here.
So, we hold off on this until we get further information?
Well, where we can vote on it.
We made a motion.
And we seconded it.
Motion made and seconded, so.
Stay in then, if that works.
I'll vote no.
We already aye.
Okay. Select Board meeting, July 13th, 2018.
Guess not. Make a motion to accept the minutes from July 13th, 2018.
Second that.
Motion made, motion seconded. Any discussion?
No.
All approve, all in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve the executive session meeting from July 13th, 2018.
Motion made, motion seconded. Under discussion, on page two, the first paragraph where it says, "Result of the recommendations from the auditors," that should read, "Recommendation from the Finance Committee." That's the only change I'd like to make on that.
Yep.
In the Finance Committee? Because it was a, I believe it was a recommendation of the auditors as well, of the auditor.
Okay, well, I didn't state auditors. I stated Finance Committee when I made the statement.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that's the only change I'd like to make. And motion made, motion seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Topic one, Fire Department, appointment of EMT from the Fire Department. I am requesting a fire chief. I am requesting that the town take action to appoint Town Resident Benjamin Labee of School Street to the ambulance department. Will be attended an EMT program at Greenfield Community College funded by the town. And I am pleased to take him on as an EMT to the community. A current member of the Fire Department, his dedication and character provide a strong foundation for the future. I first like to say thank you to Mr. Labee for taking the EMT program that was funded by the town. If anybody else is interested, contact the fire chief. I make a motion to accept Mr. Labee as an EMT for the town of Hatfield.
Second.
Motion made, motion seconded. Any discussion?
I echo your sentiment in thanking Benjamin for, for his service to the town of Hatfield.
Thank you. I didn't realize he was still here. I thought he left for school. You know, he was, he moved out, he's last month, September, yeah, to go to school.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There is a topic two.
Would the, excuse me, would the chairman mind taking, I think you wanted to take it out of order?
It's fine, they're all quick.
Okay.
Sure? Topic two, Police Chief request, Cruiser donation. Our police chief isn't, we have new cruisers in town, and Plainfield Police Department is always looking for equipment. So there was a suggestion to the board from the police chief to donate the old cruiser, which is in need of a lot of work, to the department in Plainfield. So, my colleagues want to have any discussion on this donation request?
Oh, I think it's a great idea.
I'm just not sure how.
I think we need to do two things. I think we need to declare it a surplus first.
You do.
And then if that is approved, then we would need to actually-
We need to follow the process for disposing of property, which will require the town to file on the central register, the disposition, and that we will be donating it and the reason for it.
So I'll make a motion that we declare the 2011 Ford Expedition as surplus.
Have a motion made?
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? The only discussion I have to say is I, I think it's great that we can help out another department that's in need, and that's sort of nice to help each other out. So, thank you to our police chief for coming up with this idea. I think it's an outstanding idea, and I hope Plainfield can find the money to fix it and put it back on the road. Because right now, it's, you can't put it back on the road until it's repaired. So, motion made, motion seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, so.
Marlene, you need a motion now to actually award it or donate it to the town of Plainfield? Is that correct?
Well, it's certainly the board can support, take a motion to support that.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we support the recommendation to donate the 2011 Ford Expedition to the town of Plainfield.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Any discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay.
All right. Election worker appointments from the town clerk. She has an appointment, she's, please appoint the following individuals as additional election workers for the town of Hatfield. So, we have three that you, do you want to say anything on this, or, okay?
I'll make a motion to appoint the three election workers as recommended by the town clerk.
Second that.
Okay, motion made, motion seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, on behalf of the Hatfield School Committee, there's a request that the Hatfield Select Board appoint a representative to serve on the negotiation team for the upcoming school committee negotiations with the Hatfield Teachers Association. And I believe we, I guess, do you want to elaborate on?
Sure, sure.
Okay, go ahead.
So traditionally, the, during bargaining with the Hatfield Teachers Association, besides the superintendent and school committee members, and of course, the teachers, the town has had representation. If not a select board member, then somebody that they have appointed to be their representative. And in the past, it's, we've had a select board member on it. We've also had, Colina Damski did it last time. She had a background in HR. And I'm actually one of the representatives from the school committee that's on the negotiation committee. So, we wouldn't be able to have another select board member for, for this go around of teaching negotiations, which is every three years. So, the recommendation I would make would be to have a finance committee member be part of that as a representative of the board. And I would make the recommendation that Betsy Ryder be the board of second representative to the Hatfield Teachers Association Negotiation Committee.
I bet she'd be an outstanding person to do that.
Yeah, her background and, plus being on finance, I think is-
Background and ability.
And we did float it by her, just in case this came to be tonight. So we, wasn't one of those, if you're not in the room, you get appointed to something. So, she seemed very agreeable to it, and I think it would be an asset on, for both the teachers and the town to have her sitting at that table, so. So that, I guess I'll make that in a form of a motion, to have Betsy Ryder be the board of select representative to the teacher negotiations.
Okay, motion made.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? I just want to thank Betsy Ryder for doing that. Thank you very much.
It's a lot of work, but.
Motion made, motion seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, CPC Grant Request Application. Marlene, you want to elaborate? I think the last meeting, we discussed putting in a grant.
Yes, for the Town Hall renovations project, and this is regarding the ADA compliance portion of it.
Yes.
So, there are several sections of the application, which I have provided you a copy of. And I know you just received this, you haven't had time to review it.
I think I'd better follow up a little discussion because we weren't televised the last meeting of what's happening with this grant application. As most of you are aware, previously, the architect came back with the cost of, of the construction of the last phase of this project of being over. Now it's $390,000 after they've done their numbers. And what they were going to do was they were going to look at possibly scaling back or seeing what they can change. Unfortunately, some of the stuff cannot be scaled back. I mean, you have to have so many sprinkler heads. The other problem was, you have to have a fire pump. Previously, the Town Hall, a few years back, passed the water pressure test. But now that they tried it twice, it has failed to pass the pressure test. So you have to put in a separate service for a fire pump to the building. Or you can have a water extension from School Street to Main Street, a 10-inch line, which would cost you about a half a million dollars. So, discussion on the board, we've had a lot of discussion on this of what to do, because this was, there is two phases to this project. There was Phase One, sort of, I'm going to call it, which was just to bring this building up to handicap accessibility, put in the sprinkler system. And then there was the other part of it that the town voted in for a down ramp to bring up the kitchen and bring up some of the stuff. But with, with the project being on both sides, they're both like $200,000 and $200,000. So, the board's been discussing how to present this to the town. One, one idea was the fact of maybe CPC would be able to pay for a portion of that. Say they could, they could fund the fireproof stuff, say Phase One, I'm going to call it, where we just bring the building up to handicap accessibility and fireproof it. And then maybe the town wants to vote whether or not to do the down ramp or do it at a later date. So, right now, this grant is asking for some more money. Otherwise, there'll be further discussions on how we have to deal with that. The Architectural Board has given us a, an extension to, for two years, but that doesn't mean we can't wait on getting this project done. So, I don't know if you guys want to jump in on this conversation at all, and.
I think you covered it pretty well.
Okay. So I guess down the road, there might be a couple different things at a special town meeting. One might be to fund the whole thing and get it over with, or to fund just the, bringing it up to fire code and ADA, and then, or to fund the ramp, I mean, and the, the stuff downstairs. So, unfortunately, I, it's not good news. If CPC can give us some money, then that may, that may help us out.
I, I guess the, the bottom line for me is that the, so the Architectural Access Board, or from the state, had granted us an original extension through September of 2018. As we were heading towards that in the spring, that's when we found that the prices just were, the costs were much more than anticipated, and that had been allocated for at town meeting and other funding sources. So, we had to go back to them. And as the chairman alluded to, they did in fact extend Phase, Phase Two of, of the overall project until June of 2020? Is that right?
2020, yes.
So, June of 2020. So, which means that we do in fact need to, at a minimum, be able to have this building ADA compliant. That's the elevator, that's the fire suppression, that, that's all the safety things that are going into this, to, to meet the Architectural Board's expectation and for us to meet our obligation to them in rehabbing and updating this building. So, again, as the chairman alluded to, we, we've asked CPC to see if they can fund any of those costs, those extra costs that came forward, which I personally think is, the original cost was done in 2016. I think that was the original estimate, and here we are, three years later, three and a half years later, and, you know, by waiting, the costs, you know, we would have hoped at least they'd stayed the same, but that didn't happen. So, more to follow, as Ed said, but I, I just think it's important that the town realize that at a minimum, our obligation is for the ADA compliance and the elevators and the fire suppression system. So, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
I mean, if we get the ADA compliant, then, I mean, there's always been some discussion on the ramp. Some people said the ramp should be in the back because you have people with mobility issues. So, if we did the ADA, then, and we still need to do the feasibility study to see what the needs are, if downstairs actually fits the seniors, so maybe it makes sense to let's up, do the fire, fire suppression, the elevator, get that done, and then get that feasibility study done and see if, if they're even going to stay here, you know? I mean, if, or the idea is to go down the road to another facility, so.
I, I think along those lines, just to, just to clarify, is there will be a ramp, the originally designed ramp will be part of that, part of the process of, of the rehab of Phase Two. The other ramp Ed's referring to was in fact, a secondary ramp that was going to be in the back. So that's what I think you're, I don't want to speak for you. I think what you're saying is maybe that's something down the road that we can look at versus doing it as part of this current phase. Because we would have a ramp, and we would have the elevator, so.
And I think we were just talking before we, you know, before we go to town meeting, we'll probably have a meeting on this and open it up to the town folks to express their opinions. Because it's either, either CPC actually funds it where we can go forth, or we're going to have to go back to the taxpayers for the money, so.
It's up to the townspeople in the end, anyway.
Right, it's up to the townspeople anyways, but we, we have to get this whole compliant anyways. Okay, so, do we need a motion on getting this submitted, or we just wanted to review it, Marlene, or?
Yeah, you can, you know, review it, and if you have any questions, you can contact me or stop in, and I'll be glad to discuss them with you. So, the, the amount requested is the $390,000 that the board had requested.
Thank you.
Okay, and that 390 out of a 1.6 million project would be, I forget how, what, I had that figured out, what percentage over the last, because construction costs go up 3% or 4% every year, so. In two years since, it's like 6% already up there, right?
Yep.
So, when you look at it from that perspective, it sort of makes sense. Doesn't make you feel better, but.
Like puts it into perspective.
Makes sense. Okay, topic six, we're, we're going to have a discussion on a potential special town meeting. And this was related back to, if the water grant had gone through, we definitely want to get a special town meeting to push that at West Street, but we're still waiting to hear. But there's also a, it was brought up at the last meeting on a concert, a grant, right? It was a grant with Phil for DPW for the-
For the wastewater-
Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Treatment Plant, right.
And the deadline on that is coming up.
End of November.
That's in November.
End of November. End of November, it has to be over then.
End of November.
Right.
Or approved.
I don't know if we can get a special town meeting in by the end of November.
Be hard to, it'll be tight, very tight.
So, so just, this goes back to Dave Prickett, who was here at our last, I think it was our last televised meeting.
It was televised, yes.
And he talked about wastewater improvements, many wastewater improvements that are necessary in the town, but a particular grant that was available that was requested or filed by his engineering firm on our behalf, and it was a, the, the project itself is $480,000 improvement. But we were approved for a $200,000 reimbursement or a grant. So we would in fact, if we moved forward, would have to make, you know, come up with the, the finances for $480,000, but we would get $200,000 of that back should, should we move forward. So that's kind of the high level of the conversation that we're having right now.
I'm sort of disappointed we heard about this near the end.
Not told her.
We should have heard about this from Prickett earlier, but why he didn't, knowing that this is-
Well, I think Eric was trying to, trying to communicate that to the town administrator. They were waiting, and Eric Mills, wasn't he on top of that? He was trying to, my understanding was he was, wanted to come in with the DPW. He contacted me when Phil was on vacation, and he had wanted to schedule it. And Phil wasn't here. We had asked if Phil could be here for that meeting, but he had tried to bring it forward sooner.
Well, there's, well, maybe he talked to somebody, but he didn't talk to, I didn't hear from him.
You know, the bottom line is, it's a $480,000 project, and I, personally, I just feel, as we just alluded to on the last conversation about Town Hall, should be up to the townspeople to decide if they want to move forward or not move forward. That's, I, I just think it's our due diligence to bring it forward. And then the town can certainly yea or nay, and nobody can, nobody's going to be able to say, well, you guys knew that there was a $200,000 grant out there and didn't try to get it. That's, that's my point.
Well, I mean, the town would have to pay $280,000, right?
Yep.
And get the good $200,000.
For, for necessary improvements, though. I mean, it's not like we're just spending money to not, yeah, yeah.
So.
And then, as you said, the, the other one about town meeting would be if, if the sewer, Route Five comes forward, and we're still hopeful. I mean, we haven't heard a no, so, you know, maybe that's coming our way. And then I, and then I think the, the other thing we just spoke about with the CPC, would that be something that would be discussed, Marlene, on a, if we had a November town meeting, the 390,000, or would, or the town, at that point, the town would have to-
Well, Community Preservation Committee reviews all their grant applications.
Yeah, I didn't mean for them necessarily, but I-
All their applications, and then they make a recommendation in January or February. So I don't-
Correct.
With the intent that it's for May.
Right. So, so I guess my question would be, but the town could take action on those, on that project prior to then, to decide whether they wanted to spend, yeah.
Right, well, because we'll need the additional money.
Correct.
Right, you're right, yes, we would, yes. I was just thinking about the CPC.
If they were going to change the scope of the project, yeah.
Right, and I had a discussion with Edwina and Sharon the other day regarding the additional, the increase for the renovations project. You know, Edwina was, was looking at, and you have had some conversations with the town's financial advisor, but she was looking at our current debt and principal and interest. Depending on whether it's just a straight borrowing, or it's a debt exclusion override, that's a discussion we have to have, as to how we're going to fund that.
So, if, if we move forward, I'm not, and I'm not promoting it, but if we were to move forward with a special town meeting, those are the conversations we would have prior to that, so that the town would be informed as to the decision they make, how it will affect the tax levy or their tax rate, et cetera.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
Hi, Stan. Hey, Scott. Okay, good, how are you? Good. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
We have another, I mean, do we need to set that tonight, or, I mean, I don't know if we have the time to squeeze it in. I mean, we need the finance board.
Yeah, I think we're meeting, and I guess all I would say it is, you know, maybe by the end of November. So we, I think we've got a little time to get, hook up with Lydia, who's, who's in election mode right now.
The warrant has to be posted 14 days prior. I'll need time to develop it and, develop it in town council.
In the town administration, yeah.
Review, town council, we need to review the warrant articles.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so November 7th, we make a decision.
I'm sorry?
November 7th, I guess we make a decision.
Okay.
I mean, I don't see any other way around it.
No.
And then by that time-
We'll have more information, hopefully, on different things.
Okay, I want to go out of topic since the assessor, you guys all set?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to go right with the assessors.
Six thirty.
Six twenty-eight.
Okay. Should open it at 6:30 technically, but go ahead.
Do I have to wait till 6:30?
That's for two minutes.
Yeah. I believe it is, oh, it is 6:30, yeah.
I have to wait till 6:30, right?
Right, it is 6:30 now.
Oh, okay, perfect. See, it's 6:30, all right. Okay, this is for tax classification here, and my understanding is, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is each year, we get to decide whether to have two different taxes, one for commercial property, one for residential, but the town's past history's always been one rate residential, to be fair with all the businesses in town. Is that correct? And you can elaborate if you want.
No, that's correct. Actually, we just basically read a statement to you, you folks adopt it, make a vote, and we're done. Takes all but five minutes.
Okay. So, we just need a motion?
So I'll read it first, and then you make a motion for each of them once I'm finished.
All right.
So, the recommendations, the Board of Assessors recommends that a factor of one be adopted for FY19. This will keep a single tax rate for all classes of property in Hatfield. The Board of Assessors recommends that no open space discount be granted for FY19. Residential exemption, the Board of Assessors recommends that no residential exemption be granted for FY19. The Board of Assessors recommends that no small commercial exemption be granted for That's it. So I just, y'all make a motion.
Does a motion need to be made for each of them separately?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the allocation of the tax levy that the Board of, in the Board of Assessors recommended, recommendation that a factor of one be adopted for fiscal year 2019. This will keep a single tax rate for all classes of property in Hatfield. This will keep a single tax rate for all classes of property in Hatfield.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Make a motion to recommend, to accept the recommendation from the Board of Assessor to shift from open space to residential class, the Board of Assessor's recommendation that no open space discount be granted for fiscal year 2019.
I'll second that. A motion made, motion seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. For the residential exemption, the Board of Assessor's recommendation that no residential exemption be granted for fiscal year 2019 is my motion.
Motion made, motion seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Make a motion to accept the small commercial exemption from the Board of Assessor's recommendation that no small commercial exemption be granted for fiscal year 2019.
I'll second that motion. Motion made, motion seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So, I just, you need to sign the LA five for me, and then I think we're all set.
Alright, I was just going to say thank you for, for all your work and efforts and...
While you guys are here, you want to say, you have anything to say?
Yeah, just all three of you sign at the bottom.
Okay.
Boy, is that unusual, right?
Thanks, John. Thanks a lot.
I think the only thing the assessors have to say is that this year seems to be going very, very smooth, and we appreciate all your trust and confidence moving forward in getting our stuff all together. So, thank you, nice job, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stan. Thank you, Scott.
See you later.
I'll move to topic seven, Thanksgiving holiday schedule.
Who's speaking to? Three of us look that way, so I guess we're...
Okay, I wasn't going to... Because, as you know, Thanksgiving falls on Thursday, and past practice has been the Board of Selectmen granting town employees the day after Thanksgiving off. So, you know, I wanted to bring this up, and COA Director actually approached me just recently for planning purposes. She needs to schedule her, the van services, and so I thought I would take that up.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion. It's been past practice, so.
Yeah.
Motion made, motion seconded. Any discussion?
I have something to say under discussion. You know, we do it every year. I don't, maybe it's something we can just consider making part of the HR policy, so that it's just always, you know, a day off that employees don't have to go year from year to find out if they're actually going to get it. So, that, you know, I don't know if that's something that we can look into. I mean, we've got another year now, but...
I think if you did that, you'd have to change contracts probably, too. For the day off, it's usually negotiated in the contracts, only with the contract.
These are for non-contracted employees, right? That we granted this.
Didn't say that, is that non-contract employees or everybody?
The HR, we're talking about the HR policy.
Well, just this, this, well, either way, I mean...
We would, I, it may be in the DPW contract, I'm not sure. It is, yeah, it is part of their contract. I thought it was, but I wasn't positive.
And teachers don't work.
But the HR policy does not reflect, obviously, that's why I'm asking.
Well, let's find out a little bit more about it, but I, my recommendation would be to just update the HR policy and throw the day after Thanksgiving in there. So, you still have the motion on the table?
Concerned, and if, you know, if you're doing it for everyone, you might have to change that contract, I don't know. Because you did mean all employees, right?
I do mean all employees, and we know it's in the DPW employee contract, union contract.
Yeah.
It's in there. DPW.
I will check it, but I thought...
Who else has a contract?
Police, fire.
But it's not...
Police and fires fall under the HR...
Personnel, I mean, we can add to...
Police and fire fall under the HR policy. They don't have contracts.
Chiefs do.
No, DPW has...
They have a contract, but it doesn't tell how many days off they get or anything.
The DPW union contract states the holidays that they have, right.
Yeah.
And that extra day is added to that section of the DPW union contract.
Okay, so what I'm saying is that if everybody else is going to get it off, shouldn't the other two, too, would that be affected by their contract at all? That was my question.
The other two...
The two that we just mentioned, the police chief, fire chief, would they get it off also, or would that have to be different because their contract?
Oh, because, oh, they have an employment, department heads...
You see what I mean, you're giving it to everybody, you know?
Well, department heads, while they do have a employee contract, they still fall under the HR policy as well. They would get it, yes.
Okay, well, as long as it's fair for everybody, that's good, then I'm fine with that. Are we good?
Yeah, that would include the building inspector.
Because it'll mean everybody, then.
That would include the building inspector, fire chief, police chief.
Okay, motion made, motion seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Topic nine, EMD appointment, job description, remedial action. So, Marlene, what do we want to take first? The remediation response to...
The remediation response would be to...
Can I ask a question before we start that? Just, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
First, okay. When I read this, the agenda, when it said remedial action, I wasn't sure what that meant. And is that enough? I don't want to end up with the same situation that got us to this remedial action point. When I read it, I didn't know what it meant. I had to go through to see what you meant by remedial action.
Oh.
So, because I, reading through the epic stuff, it said that how it changed, the agenda's changed for this year, because we all had to get that and sign off on it, and it said it's not enough just to mention something, it has to be clear for anyone who would want to come and listen to that, what it is, so it's not...
Yeah, what I should have added under, on the agenda was open meeting law complaint slash EMD appointment, job description.
So, I was just concerned, is that enough, or we're not going to get, you know?
Well, that's, if, if...
You know, I don't know if that's... You know, I don't want it to happen again.
Yeah, if the board would like to delay this until November 7th and, and re...
Be on the safe side, maybe we should, just to...
Take it up on November 7th.
If we have questions, I just want to make sure we're...
I picked this up today, you know, so there was no real notice I could give you.
Well, we discussed it at the last meeting, at the previous meeting, this was a topic on the agenda, and the board had responded that they would take it up for a revote at the next meeting. A letter was...
Just as a matter of clarification, not that, not as an admission of any sort of open meeting law violation, by the way, I would suggest.
Well, an explanation was given to Mr. Lesko.
Yes, it was, I just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same wavelength.
The letter was sent him explaining the reason why, and that letter was copied to the Attorney General's office, and a copy of the letter to Attorney Mullin as well.
So, are we discussing it now, then, or not? Because I think it just started the discussion.
Okay, sorry. I apologize.
I just started discussing it, and I was just trying to protect everyone, so it doesn't happen again, but, you know, if you know...
It doesn't happen again, it never happened in the first place. Just because somebody says something happened, doesn't mean it did.
No, no, no.
That's what, that's the clarification I'm trying to make, Cindy.
Okay, I'm saying, so someone else doesn't file a complaint.
Okay, that's a fair, that's a fair comment, yeah.
So, it doesn't happen again.
Okay.
So, we'll move it to November 7th.
Let's wait till 7th, then, I mean, I'm fine with that.
Okay, move it to 7th, so...
Move the table, item number nine.
Throw it out there.
Is there a topic number 10?
Hope not.
Nope.
Motion to adjourn.
It isn't.
Were you doing the first part of nine?
Before we adjourn, do we have on any unanticipated new business?
It's not on the agenda.
Okay.
Was there, I just had a question, is it two parts to number nine, or is it just one?
Two.